This public here has been scheduled from 5:50 to 6 o'clock. It's 10 minute period to discuss Cohasset Public Schools position on the school choice. I'll turn it to our superintendent of schools to sort of give us a brief synopsis of what that is, just so our viewers can understand and all of us can understand. Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chairman McClellan. Yes, as we do annually and all districts do, we have to make a determination if Cohasset is going to be a school choice district or if we're going to have school choice at any of our levels. Just so you're aware, the inter-district school choice law, which is general law, chapter 76, section 12B requires all districts to accept incoming school choice students unless the school committee votes not to participate or votes to limit the number of incoming students in particular grades. The required school committee vote must be taken annually prior to June 1st. So in other words, there are certain districts that determine that they are school choice, which allows them to take in students at a fee to be part of their their school, but they can only take in those students from other school choice districts. So it's called inter-district school choice. We have not participated in the years that I, as far as I know, Ellen, you might be able to provide more history on this, but we have never been school choice in Cohasset. You saw the list of schools in the area that are, there are some in the area, but there aren't too many. But every year we do have to bring it up as a matter of vote. And of course, what's always in question is enrollment, the resources you have in a particular district and whether we want to allow the choice of other students to come in from communities that are school choice into our district, which would of course necessitate that we are school choice. So at that, Chairman McClellan, I'll leave it to the committee to consider this and to take a vote. And then I will, I will in due time send my answer to the state regarding where we are with this.
Okay, introduction, Dr. Sullivan, thank you very much. With that introduction, do any members of the school committee have any discussion points? Start, I have alphabetical order here, Mrs. Cleary.
No.
None there. Mr. Kearney is still not present. So Mrs. Marr, do you have anything to add on this issue or topic?
I just have a comment. It's interesting to me that, you know, we're in the South Shore League in athletics and three of the districts in the league Mashpee, East Bridgewater, and Carver are all school choice, which allows them to pull from a greater talent pool, you know, to support their athletic teams. And we've seen the, oh, and Rockland, so there's four.
Rockland.
Yeah, and you know, we've seen, we've seen the impact of that. And I want to just give kudos to Cohasset High School athletes for holding their own against some of these districts that are able to pull from other areas. To, you know, these students want us to, you know, better their academic and their athletic endeavors. So that's all I really wanted to say.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Marr. Mrs. St. Ange, anything to add on this issue?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll just state that, and I don't, I think Dr. Sullivan might have touched on it, but for a small district, you know, our resources could easily be sort of overburdened if we had a huge influx of students that we couldn't even, you know, accommodate with just square footage from a square footage perspective, but so it's just a thought that I had regarding this and then perhaps is maybe the driving reason behind the fact that we've never done it. But anyway, that's the only comment I have. If there's no further discussion and I don't see any comments from the community in the Q and A feature, I guess I would just look for a motion to vote on Cohasset's position in school choice. I guess a vote of aye would be in favor of making Cohasset a school choice district and a vote of nay would vote against such a decision. So with that said, is there a motion of that effect on the floor?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. St. Ange, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cleary. All in favor? Mrs. Cleary?
Nay.
So just to repeat, a nay vote would be against making Cohasset a school choice district, which is going in line with how it's been in the past. Vote in favor of this would make Cohasset a school choice district and would be going in a different direction than we have in the past. Okay, so Mrs. Cleary, do you wish to change your vote? Or is that your vote?
That's my vote.
Okay, Mrs. Marr?
Nay.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Nay.
Nay, Craig McClellan, I do not see Mr. Kearney on at this point. So the motion fails. Cohasset will not be a school choice district for the next school year. And that vote was four votes and one absentee. So with that, I don't think there's any more business conduct on the public hearing and will, I guess, take a motion to adjourn the public hearing and then enter into our regular school committee meeting. So is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing on school choice at this time?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Cleary is her second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. St. Ange, all in favor? Mrs. Cleary?
Aye.
Mrs. Marr?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan, motion passes, four votes and one absent school committee member. So we will now move into the regularly scheduled school committee meeting. I'll call that to order at, well, I guess it's 5:58, so I'm going to wait a couple of minutes because it's before the agenda marked it as starting at 6:00 PM. So we're a little bit ahead of schedule here. So just pause and everyone's free to turn off the. Hi Jake, welcome.
Hi, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Just give us a few minutes and you'll be, you'll be up in no time, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's 6 o'clock. Everyone turn their cameras back on so I know you're here. Sullivan. All right. All right, it is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the May 5th, 2021 meeting of the Cohasset School Committee to order. Would all committee members present, excuse me, before I say that, this meeting is being held virtually in accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of State Emergency and Commonwealth, but it is being streamed live on Facebook and Cohasset 143 TV. Would all committee members present, please indicate so. Mrs. Cleary?
Present.
Mr. Kearney is absent. Mrs. Marr?
Present.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Present.
And I am present, Craig McClellan. Well, happy Cinco de Mayo, everyone, and Teacher Appreciation Week. So for those of you who have a special someone out there that changed your life one year in a classroom, please reach out to them and thank them and tell them how impactful they were because they probably don't hear it enough. They have such an important job and we are all so appreciative of our educators. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Moving into public comment, which is the first agenda item, we will give our community members a opportunity to chime in on issues that are not already on the agenda. If your point is on the agenda or is a regularly scheduled agenda item, please wait until we get to that point in our program. So we'll give a few minutes here for the community members to chime in if they have public comment. Okay, going once, going twice. Moving on to the superintendent's report, we turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan. Dr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chairman McClellan, and as always, thank you all for being here. Yes, I would be remiss if I didn't start off right with Teacher Appreciation Week. We probably have more than a week needed to appreciate everything our teachers have done this year. Of course, they've gone above and beyond in all their efforts to make sure that our students are educated in any way we possibly can educate them. And the efforts are really sincerely appreciated. And that goes for our administrators too. And certainly we have, but I'm counting them on the screen here. We have four amazing educators with us today and they'll be highlighting some of their student efforts. We have Mrs. Perel, Mrs. Bradford, Mrs. Johnston, and Principal Sullivan, of course, who gets the pleasure of being here again for the second time in two meetings. But they're excellent examples of the wonderful staff we have. And hopefully, you know, the staff can take some time this week to just realize how appreciated they are and to know that, you know, not just the leadership, but the community appreciates all your efforts. So thank you for all you do. Also, in the COVID front, as I had mentioned, the last time we had, our numbers had spiked for community members contracting COVID over the break. And it seems that we're in a spot, we haven't, knock on wood, had any known reports this week. So it seems we're in a spot where it might be cooling back down to where it was before. Of course, we're encouraged that vaccinations are now open for 16 and above. And from information I've received, 12 and above will be clearly able to access vaccinations soon. Hot off the press, we have just acquired 100 vaccination appointments at the Marshfield Fairgrounds. Just got this email about five minutes ago for students in Cohasset 16 to 18 on Friday. So that would be the first shot of the Pfizer. And there's a permission slip that they need to bring in and they need to be accompanied by a parent or guardian as they bring the permission form with them. I'll get the specifics out. It says they will need to be accompanied by a parent or guardian and they will need to bring the attached permission form with them. And it is the Pfizer vaccine. So I'll be getting that information out to, to the community soon as I kind of digest it. But it's right here, so I thought I'd share it with you. And that's certainly good news as we move forward with that. We're continuing to transition here at the middle and high school. I think we're sort of into a rhythm now with having all of our kids back the full time. And we are also very much concentrating on transitions, you know, having transitions between second grade and third grade and between fifth grade and sixth grade. And looking at our middle and high school transitions, we've been doing some work on it. Just recently, I know Principal Mills, our guidance counselor, Ally Pierce, and other members of the middle school team have worked very closely with Deer Hill to do a bit of the beginnings of an orientation. Actually, I should say it started with a survey that was sent to all fifth graders, basically trying to get a feel, and they took this in computer class, to get a feeling for what might be some apprehensions they have about middle school. What are they really looking forward to? What would help their experience as they move in? And then that information really informed Principal Mills and his team as they came and spoke to the students. And I know we have other meetings coming up with the music team at the middle school, working with Mr. DeWolff. And I believe, I think, I think that might be coming up soon. We also have our foreign language team at the middle school, at least two of them. I know Gabby and Kathy will be going down to the Deer Hill to work on that transition. And then I know this Tuesday night, Principal Mills is having a Zoom meeting with all fifth grade parents who are interested in finding out more information about the middle school. So that, I know has been advertised by Principal Mills and certainly will be moving forward. And then we move into our course registration. So it's an exciting time and it's nice to see Principal Sullivan and Principal Mills and their teams working so closely in this transition. And then it goes without saying that the fifth grade team and the sixth grade team will be meeting and special education teams are meeting, our child study teams are talking and meeting. So we've really refined our process with transition between the two schools. So pretty proud of that and certainly hats off to those, those teams. That's really all I have for, for, no pictures today, like I typically do or anything for my updates. But I'll turn it over to Jake, Jake Squatrito, who is on our Student Advisory Council. We haven't had the chance to meet this week. I promise we will next week. This week just kind of got away from me personally, Jake, so didn't get a chance to email you guys. But I'd love to hear how you're doing and any other thoughts you have moving forward. So Jake, take it away.
Yeah, so I think the last time I talked was like the meeting where like the vote was happening on going back to school.
Yeah.
And I have actually really enjoyed it and it's been really nice. I thought it would be like really difficult at first, like going into school every day, especially now that we have like full days again. But I've actually really enjoyed it a lot and I'm just looking forward to like the next couple of months, like next couple of months before school ends, because I think it's going to go pretty well.
I think so too, Jake, and it'll be interesting because the seniors' time is sadly kind of limited in the building. And then next thing you know, you're, you'll be a senior yourself. So it's a, you know, it's quite a, quite a transition, an exciting one. I should say, as we walked the buildings, Dr. Skones and I, and actually walked in with Mrs. Cleary and Mr. McClellan, it was very quiet at the high school. And I actually afterwards, I could, I couldn't remember why. I said, you know, Dr. Skones, why is this so quiet? And she reminded me all the AP testing was happening. So we've had a significant amount of students down at our Ausgood School. And thank you Ausgood for, I don't think there have been at Deer Hill, have they been at Deer Hill, Dr. Skones? No, just Ausgood, thank you, doing our AP testing. And thank you to the Ausgood team for that. Much safer COVID situation spreading out with more people in the rooms. And I know that was difficult to juggle, but you know, we're working through that. So the other exciting thing happening this week. So any questions, Chairman McClellan, for Jake? Jake, thank you for the update.
Let us, let us see, Mrs. Cleary?
No, thank you, Jake. Glad everything's going well.
Okay, Mrs. Marr?
No, thanks Jake. Enjoy your last couple of months of your junior year.
Thank you, Mrs. Marr. Mrs. St. Ange?
I'm just thrilled that things are going well and it is, I agree with you Jake, as I am a teacher, going back to full time was kind of scary. And then we realized, hey, this is actually pretty great. And we used to do this all the time, isn't it crazy? I'm just wondering if there's anything in particular that you're looking forward to or anything that's feeling just back to normal or kind of different or just kind of that general like, I don't know, just any specifics as you are easing into this full time, especially now post-April vacation, that you're there truly a full day.
I just like feeling, like this sounds kind of cheesy, but I like feeling like I'm in school again, kind of like the past couple of months, like you're in and you're out. And when you're in, it's like different, you have half as many people there and they have to pay like half as much attention. But I really enjoyed like just everybody being in the same place, doing the same thing, like being on the same schedule. I've like, it's just been like such a change that I've really enjoyed.
I agree with you. I don't think that's cheesy at all. It's so nice to see everybody and feel like we're all back and together.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Ange. Jake, I don't have any questions, but it was just, it's so encouraging to hear your perspective about getting back in and, you know, as you've probably heard me say before and everyone else has, you know, the bottom line is that everyone on the screen is here because of you. And we're trying to make the best decisions we can by you. And so it's really encouraging and it makes us so happy in our core to hear you report that you're, you're happy to be back. So thanks for being here. As always, Jake, we love having your participation and welcome your insights. Thank you so much. And Dr. Sullivan, I think if you're okay with it, Jake's able to get back to his homework or whatever he has to do.
Yes, of course. Jake, as always, thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, I just will note for the record that we're welcoming our school committee member, Mr. Kearney, at 6:10 PM. And we're also welcoming some wonderful Deer Hillers here that I think we'll be formally introduced to in a moment. So good to see you guys. Hello, 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 welcome, welcome, welcome. Dr. Sullivan, turning it back over to you.
Yes, thank you. And I was, I think I promoted everybody here. And just so the educators know, Ms. Perel, Ms. Bradford, and Ms. Johnston, I've made you and I'll make you a co-host as well, Principal Sullivan. All of you are co-hosts. And, and Ms. Johnston, I know you did send me the presentation ahead of time. So if you'd rather me show that, I can do it, but you have, you all have the power, so to speak. And I'm going to let Principal Sullivan introduce her team and the, and the kids that are here. And I just, I'm very proud of this, this whole endeavor. As you know, or may know, Women's History Month was April, was in April. And I just was really proud to see, it's a good, a good mark of a healthy school and a wonderful school environment when they're very much tying in their lessons to inclusivity and certainly acknowledging women's history was an important thing. So this piqued my interest and I asked Principal Sullivan if she would bring the team and some of the students who do wonderful work all the time, all those students, to present. So Principal Sullivan, I'll leave you to it.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. On behalf of Women's History Month, we have two different projects that we're running at Deer Hill that we want to highlight today. One was an project with our, on all school project. And it was our March Madness book brackets that also extends into April. And this is a tradition at Deer Hill School that we were even able to continue during the pandemic last year. And while last year our theme was windows and mirrors, this year Mrs. Perel and Ms. Bradford selected Women Warriors as our theme to honor Women's History Month. And so we will have students from Mrs. Perel's class, we have four students. We have Nora McDonough, we have Jane, you guys can give a little wave when I call your name. We have Jane Mcnevin, we have Christian Condratt, and we have Molly O'Carroll that will be speaking on behalf of that project. And before they do, I just want to introduce the other portion of this presentation, which is a couple of fifth graders from Mrs. Johnston and the classroom that's co-taught with Ms. Bradford. We have Jack Clark and Liam Baker, who are going to be presenting on women's history biography projects that they completed with a focus on women in STEM and women who represent as global citizens. So couldn't be more proud of not only these kiddos for the hard work they invested in these projects, but also our staff and teachers who really have embraced inclusion and diversity and what we like to think of as culturally responsive teaching in their practices daily. So this is just a highlight of some of the things happening at Deer Hill. And with that, I think I will turn it over. I'm not sure, Mrs. Perel, are you starting? Or Miss, nope, Mrs. Johnston and Ms. Bradford. All right, take it away and I will mute myself.
It's actually just me, Mrs. Sullivan. Then it's going to head over to Mrs. Perel. You know, we're mixing it up on you today. We just wanted to let you all know that we are so excited to be here. We are really excited that we were able to find a meaningful way to celebrate strong women who have integrity and determination, courage and resilience that aren't always the women that we might hear about in the newspaper. So we were really excited to find some books for March Madness and for our students to select some other women for their projects. And we really hope that they were able to learn from them, to stand up for themselves and for others, to learn from their mistakes, to challenge gender roles and to make their own mark. So we're excited to hear from the students now. Mrs. Perel, on to you.
Thanks, Mrs. Bradford. Fourth graders, just make sure, do you guys all have your, your sheet? And maybe your book if you wanted to. Awesome job. And you did such a nice job changing your names. So proud of you. And fourth graders, just give a wave to all your classmates because they can't, they're not on the window, but they were all tuning in for moral support. We talked about it. Okay. So if you want to just pin one of our familiar faces videos so you don't see everybody else, that's fine too, guys, if you're getting a little nervous. So school committee, Mrs. Sullivan was telling you that we, this is our second annual March Madness Picture Book Bracket. Last year was Windows and Mirrors and this year we celebrated the Women Warriors. So we started with four separate brackets. We had guest readers from the Deer Hill staff who recorded themselves. We used our hybrid model skills and do we use some looms? And we did have the whole school participate. Each week, students would vote which book would advance to the next round. The competition was fierce. Mrs. Bradford, Mrs. Sullivan and I were texting each other like complete book nerds on a Sunday night being like, it's 51 to 49, where's this going to go? So every vote really did make a difference. And our final books were between Wilma Rudolph and Issa Too Cisay. So I'm going to pass it over first to Jane Mcnevin. I have four students and they're going to share with you which Women Warrior books really stood out for them. So Jane, you want to unmute, honey?
Yeah, hi. So I'm going to be talking about One Plastic Bag. And it's about, it's by Miranda Paul. And so, hello, I'm Jane Mcnevin and my favorite Women Warrior book was One Plastic Bag by Miranda Paul. The book was very inspiring to me and I loved how, and I loved how Issa Too never gave up even when people doubted her. I believe she was doing what was right by recycling and reusing. The book started as Issa Too littering like the rest of her town. She saw them being thrown and thought it was okay. After a while, they started to pile up. Issa Too, Issa Too did not like that. So her and her friends, the recycling woman of Gambia, leave them into fun and reusable bags. I love how Issa Too never gave up even when people doubted her. She was very strong and brave and I really admire that. Thank you for listening to me talk about One Plastic Bag by Miranda Paul.
Awesome job, Jane. So proud of you. Christian Condratt, you want to unmute, sweetie?
Um, yeah, hi. I'm going to do the same book as Jane, One Plastic Bag. Hi, I'm, I'm Christian Condratt. I'm in fourth grade class, Mrs. Perel's class. I, in March Madness, One Plastic Bag was my, was my most favorite book. I think Issa Too Cisay and the recycling woman of Gambia made a big impact on saving the earth and stopped making plastic bags. Then everyone uses plastic bags and throw them on the ground like nothing. But Issa Too really tried to stop that. This book started when Issa Too found a plastic bag on the ground and thought it was great. When it got wet, it would still be fine. After a while, plastic was all over her town and she did not, didn't like it. Issa Too had a plan to get the plastic bag and make it into new bags and useful items that everyone uses day to day. She, she even had some friends to help her. She didn't give up on her friends and her town became so much cleaner. This book means a lot to me and I hope it does to you. I hope, I hope you try to make more things out of plastic like Issa Too Cisay.
Awesome job, Christian. Thanks, buddy. I think we said Molly, you were next, or were, you okay with that? Great job, honey.
Hi, my name is Molly O'Carroll and my favorite book of March Madness was Wilma Unlimited. I love that she overcame so many obstacles. She got polio and cannot walk for most of her life. Wilma was black, so when she was sick, she did not have access to medicine. But she still got back up. She never gave up and she became the world's fastest woman. Also, she was playing basketball and a college coach was watching. He admired Wilma's basketball playing, but he was especially impressed by the way she ran. He wanted her for his track team. With his help, Wilma got a full athletic scholarship to Tennessee State University. The reason why I voted for this book in March Madness was because it taught me not to give up and I can do anything.
Molly, good job, baby cakes. Nora, you want to unmute, sweetheart? Good job.
Um, so, hi, my name is Nora McDonough and I'm here to tell you which book I liked the best in Women Warriors, March Madness. I chose Shark Lady, yeah, because I thought it was surprising that the main character was not afraid to go to Shark instead. Yeah, I don't have any self connections because personally I don't really like sharks. Another thing I liked about this book was that the main character's a girl. I noticed that a lot of books have boys as main characters. I think that Shark Lady was one of the best books in Women Warriors.
Awesome job, Nora. So proud of you. So if we have any questions, we take them now, otherwise we're going to toss it over to you, Mrs. Johnston.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we were so excited to be asked to.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we were so excited to be asked to present. I, as a teacher, have been recognizing Women's History Month for many years in lots of different formats in terms of a project. I chose a couple of years ago to focus on lesser-known women, sometimes of STEM and global citizenship focus. And I think for some of the students, you know, having to do a little bit of extra research and, and maybe choosing someone that they had never even heard of. And so there were a couple of those. But I was really excited when Liam and Jack volunteered to present there. So Dr. Sullivan, you said I can share my screen, right?
You should be able to.
Okay. Okay, here we go. Um, so this is just a picture of all of my students' projects. As you can see around the outside, I just chose a couple. We went with a scrapbooking theme because, you know, who doesn't love some fun scrapbooking? And, and so, you know, the kids were able to have a lot of flexibility with, you know, how they wanted to put their presentation together. As you can see, they're really colorful and creative. And so I'm going to ask Liam Baker to talk a little bit about his project first. Liam, you can unmute yourself, buddy.
Um, hi, I'm Liam, and I chose Mary Currie because she did lots of chemistry and I like math and science, which are both part of chemistry. Some interesting facts I learned about Mary Currie are that she was the first woman to win the Nobel Peace Prize for Chemistry. She was the first person to win the Nobel Peace Prize twice. The second time for her physics, when she died because of exposure to radioactivity. A new element, keryum, was discovered and named after her. During her lifetime, she studied nuclear act, she studied nuclear activity and how it could help with medicine. She is also famous for being one of the first people to discover X-rays. In conclusion, I think Mary Currie was an amazing scientist and mathematician.
Awesome. Thanks, Liam. And I love that Liam chose her just because she obviously isn't a, someone that's still alive and just started so long ago with, with science and scientist women. Love them. All right, Jack Clark, you're up next, my friend.
All right. I chose Michelle Obama because she inspired kids to have leadership. And her outreach work in our country and other countries shows she cares about all humans.
Awesome, Jack. Thank you so much. Good work, my friend. I am having technical difficulties and I have lost my mouse and I can't get to the stop-share thing.
Karen, this is called like a Zoom hijack.
Seriously? Oh, good. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Saved the day. Okay. Phew, I'm sweating.
The least I can do. I'm not sure how I saved the day.
Looking like, where's?
I'll take the credit.
Cursor, what happened to my cursor? Jack and Liam, thank you so much. And as you could see from my first slide, really all of my students knocked it out of the park. I was really proud of their effort and, and, and again, thank you for having us be part of this. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Did any of the school committee members have any questions for maybe the teachers? I don't know if I want to, we want to put the Deer Hillers on the spot with any sort of questions, but any questions for the teachers about the projects or the classes or anything like that?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you so much for this. It is like, I'm like, I'm just filled with joy after listening to that presentation. Thank you. And I did have the opportunity to walk the halls of Deer Hill the other day. And I stopped in my tracks when I came up to each of the displays on the wall because they're so beautiful and so impressive and so interesting. You guys did such a good job. Thank you so much for all your hard work and for coming to tell us about it.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaleri. Mr. Kearney, do you have anything to say?
I would say the same thing. Awesome. What a presentation. And it's so nice to see our children really reiterate what, how important women's issues are and to find women that you don't really hear about a lot and to, to put it to, to life was really awesome to watch. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Spoken like a true girl dad. Mrs. Mar, any comments?
Um, great presentation. I love the fact that, you know, kids stepped out of their comfort zone maybe and, and read some books that they might not have picked up, you know, for their reading time. And as a reader myself, I love to do that also. I think it's great learning about all, all people. I learned something about Marie Currie, which I didn't know that she had, was one of the starts in nuclear medicine and X-rays and things like that. Thought that was very interesting. So well done to all the kids, well done to all the teachers, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Miss St. Ange, anything to add?
Yes, I mean, Ms. Perel, Ms. Johnston, and Ms. Bradford, awesome projects. Those are so well-designed and I appreciate how much time goes into planning and prepping and building the kids up with their skills to be prepared to put together such awesome projects and presentations and to speak publicly. So well done to you. And then to Jane and Christian and Molly and Nora and Liam and Jack, awesome, awesome job. Great, strong voices. I really love your use of transition words in your presentations. And it's also just very well-argued. There are a few books that I have not read there, and now I'm going to add them to my list and read them in my classes. So thank you for sharing that.
Okay, so a grade A from our resident teacher, Mrs. St. Ange. Thank you. I just want to say, and I think it was actually little Ms. McDonough that may have mentioned this at the outset of her presentation, but if, if she was the one that presented on Shark Lady, I can't remember, but I think it was Ms. McDonough. There it is. Okay, there's the proof. So she had mentioned that she liked that book because it had a girl as the protagonist and that you don't usually see that. And that is a very, very important part of these types of lessons. And we'd love to see that because that is true. Because oftentimes there are not enough female characters or characters of any sort of diverse ethnic backgrounds in certain stories and books, but especially women as well. And so that was such an important point, Ms. McDonough. Thank you for making that. It was a, it was a sort of, I'm certainly part of the impetus behind the, the project itself. And teachers, thank you guys so much for ensuring that this is part of the curriculum, ensuring that a priority is placed and that, you know, the, the importance of, of women and the role they play, not only in our history, but in our future, is emphasized to our young students as they grow into healthy and responsible adults. Kids, great job. So impressed. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I was looking forward to it all week. Wonderful presentation. Thank you, teachers and leadership for making this possible for us.
Thank you. Thank you all for, you, you, this is a good, a good example of the fantastic collaboration that happens on a staff level at Deer Hill. As you can see, different grade levels are weaving in a similar theme. And, you know, it looks like we only have one student left, Nora, but you could take the compliment, Nora, because it's not easy to present in this format and you really did a fabulous job. I think you're miles ahead of where, you know, you, you, you might be from your, from your, where you are age-wise. So thank you and great job and have a good night, teachers, Principal Sullivan, Nora, and thank you, students as well.
Nora, we're wearing the same shirt. Look at your shirt. We're wearing the same shirt.
Oh, that's awesome. That is so cool.
I love you, buddy. We'll see you later. So much.
You guys are right in sync. All right, see you later, everybody. Okay, that was nice. So Chairman McClellan, if I could march on, is that okay?
Yeah, I'll just say, tough act for Dr. Scollins to follow, but let's move forward if we can here, if we must.
You might transition into something else now if she's.
Yeah, I was going to say that Chairman McClellan, I said, we're all done. That was, that's it. But, but I do want to give you an update on our summer program. As you know, last year we had the Jump Start Summer Program, and we were able to do that because we got a grant from the federal government called the Summer and Vacation Learning School Grant. And so they thought that we all needed a little bit of help because of the pandemic. So we were fortunate enough to receive over $20,000 for that grant. And we had a two-week Jump Start Program for our students in grades one through five. It was, it was so much fun and I was so excited to see it. The kids hadn't been in school and it was just a really, really fun couple of weeks. We also, during that grant, did apply and received money for a school vacation grant. Unfortunately, there just really wasn't interest in it. We tried at Christmas, we tried February, it just, it just wasn't there. So we are not the only people that were in that boat. So they told us we could roll our money over. And so we did another application process and amended our grant and told them about a summer learning program that we would like to offer. And I did this in conjunction with Barbara Sawanka. And we are going to offer a four-week summer learning program for grades one through 11. Those grades are of their age when they're starting school in September. It's going to start July 12th and go through August 15th. It'll be Monday through Thursdays from 8:30 to 11:30. And one of the things that we will be looking at as we look at the application, this is what was part of the grant, is that we need to prioritize our students with higher needs. So it is open to everyone, but we will be looking at students who are, who have IEPs, 504s, maybe English language learners already in some supports such as Title I reading. Maybe they're getting math and ELA support. And so we will be prioritizing because we have a cap, because we can only do so many students. So we have about a 40-student cap at the elementary program. And we have that at the middle school. Now, it's a four-week program and because that 40-person cap made us think that there would be more than 40. And right now we have about 86 families that have applied, one through 11. We thought if we did a two-week session, so two, two-week sessions, that would allow us to do, to have more students participate. So that's our hope. So we sent out the information last Monday for families to apply. And like I said, we have about 86 families so far. We're going to close it on May 12th, which is a week from today. That will allow us to be able to look at who we have that want to participate and kind of look at groupings. But just to give you a little overview of what it will look like for each group. So at the elementary level, it will be 8:30 to 11:30 and really very much like a camp-like experience. Similar to the Jump Start, we'll be doing ELA, math, lessons and activities. There'll be math, lessons and activities. But there'll also be a lot of team-building and SEL experiences for the students because, you know, I just think that, as we all know, we've all been through some trying times. And if our students are feeling that maybe they're struggling a little bit at school, being able to kind of bolster their self-esteem is going to make them be able to, to do their work better. So, so we'll be doing that at the elementary level. Then at the middle school, similar but more developmentally appropriate, we'll have this teacher who teaches ELA and one that has math, and they will work in collaboration. Our group sizes are only going to be around 10 students per group because we don't want to get too large. We just want to make sure that we have that time for that individual and small group instruction. So at the middle school, the math teacher will have 10 students, ELA will have 10. They will flip-flop, so it'll be about an hour, 45-minute lessons in ELA and then math. And then together, they may do some cooperative work together as a group of 20 if they think that that's okay for that group, or it may be separate. At the high school level, it will really be a tutoring session. So that'll be a 50-minute block of ELA or math. Students can participate in one or both. And that will be set up based on the number of students that we have and, and the schedule. So there will be some flexibility as to what it looks like. The elementary, obviously, we have the most number of students and families that are interested. So that two-week, that two, two-week session really works well. We'll look at the middle and high school levels to see how, you know, how that looks with our numbers. They're not as high right now. There's only about 20, maybe 21 altogether for middle and high school. So we'll figure those pieces out. But the, the staffing is in process or we're hiring and interviewing right now. We have some staff that are from Cohasset and then we also have staff from outside. Last year, we had some that were in, from Cohasset and some that were outside. So that's been really kind of fun to meet some new people. We have a lot of young, energetic teachers who want to participate in this program. So Lisa Farrell is going to be the administrator of the program. She did that last year. And so her and I have been interviewing since last week ESPs and teachers. So I'm very excited. I can't, I think everyone I have met has been outstanding. So that's very exciting. So I am excited for us. So again, applications went out on Monday in letters. They will be posted on the website. But anybody who has questions can reach out to me or to Principal Farrell. I think a couple of questions that have come up, so I'll just say that people are wondering about choosing sessions. They wanted to give us their preference. We chose not to do that because we really aren't sure of the makeup of the group. So we want to be able to make sure that our groups are thoughtful and purposeful. So once we have that arranged, then we'll talk to families about sessions. The other thing that we are doing is running this program concurrently with the ESY, that Extended School Year Program. They actually will start one week earlier than, than the summer program. But the reason we did this was really to be efficient about our resources. So we'll be able to use the same nurses, custodial services, everything will be happening, you know, at the same time. The elementary will be at Osgood, and then the middle school will be at the middle school and the high school will be at the high school. I've also spoken with Ted Carroll and they have their summer camp program. So families who want to participate in a summer camp program can also do our program. And the rec department will send staff up to Osgood to pick up those students and walk them down to Deer Hill for the recreation department. So you don't have to pick one or the other for the summer camp. You can absolutely do both. So we'll be working with Ted Carroll on how we're going to, you know, collaborate, make sure our lists are all organized. But I'm really excited about it. I think this will be a really fun opportunity, kind of keep things going in the summer. But it's not a huge commitment. But speaking of commitment, I do want to ask that if you are applying for this, that you absolutely commit to the two weeks because we will have a waitlist for families and we want to be fair. So if you think you're going to be on vacation for part of that, I ask, kindly ask that you, that you don't apply because we do have families that can participate the whole time. And we want to make sure that, that we're fair and reasonable for everybody. So that's the quick, the quick synopsis of our program. So any questions?
Can I ask a question? I apologize. I might have been distracted. I'm, you know, doing my note-taking thing. But grades from first grade to 11th, I thought you said, right?
Right, right. So entering into next year, yeah.
So anyone who's in middle or high school would be at the high school?
Or the middle, yeah, middle high school, yeah.
There. Okay. I just got confused because I, I wasn't sure if there was no middle school option, but there is. Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Kearney, any questions?
I just got to say, wow, and I'm really impressed. This is fantastic and what a way to use the grant. This is something that's well-needed in the community. And I just want to also just make a note that Governor Baker had announced a $70 million plan for summer programs as well. And if we were able to get some of that grant money, could we, as needed, hopefully, so we don't have to turn anybody away, are we looking out for those grants?
We are. That's a great question because that was one of the reasons too, to do that two-week session. We also could use semester money. So I think that there is a way to supplement because that, the, we did make it larger. So the grant money that we do have won't cover all of it. So I was working with Dr. Sullivan and Sue Owens on how we can fund that. But yeah, we're going to look into that, that money and see if we could use it. Because I, if I'm, my hope is that everybody who wants it can do it.
Right.
Yeah, and our, the other, she'll be getting the staffing, right? So I just, that's the other piece. But, you know, we'll just keep doing it. If that happens, we'll post it again and we'll, people will apply and we'll.
Awesome. And I wish all the success in the world. That's great.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney.
Mrs. Mar?
Thank you, Dr. Scollins. I think, I think this is terrific. It addresses, you know, what we had identified earlier in the year that, you know, we might have some students with some, some achievement gaps, some learning gaps, and how important it is to keep them, you know, engaged and, and all of that. And I'm thrilled that you have 86 families have signed up already. That's, that's terrific. That's really good. So I look forward to hearing about it, you know, from the audience when it's completed.
You can always call me, Mrs. Mar.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mrs. St. Orange?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very excited about this. I'm thrilled that it's going to be continuing into this summer. I, I kind of, my hope is that there's a way to make it keep going even after this summer. I feel like perhaps learning gaps from a pandemic don't get cleaned up in one year. And even without a pandemic, it's always so nice to be able to provide support. And, and just in like a very digestible amount, that two weeks of mornings is such a nice tidbit for kids to be able to feel supported and keep that momentum and not backslide in the summer, but also not feel like, oh, my gosh, I have to do this all summer. I don't, perhaps I'm just hungry because I haven't eaten dinner yet. But is there a way to combine, like, I don't know if the school lunches are still subsidized through summer. I don't know if kids can like, because all the lunches are free. I wonder if lunches can be combined in like a package deal and learn hard all morning and then take a lunch with you? Just to make the most of our lunch program?
Yeah, I don't know, but that's a great idea.
Yeah, just ask the hungry kid during the meeting and I'll propose a lunch option, but.
That's a great idea. As you know, the, for those who are listening out there, the, the lunch program has been extended throughout the end of the school year. That's a very, very good question. I, I think that's something to look at.
We might as well maximize that if we can, right?
That'd be huge. That's a great idea. All right, I'll, I will look into that.
Great, thank you.
Right, great idea, Mrs. St. Orange. You're full of them. Yes, I, I just want to reiterate Paul's point, Ms. Kearney's point, excuse me, Dr. Scollins. It's just, you know, one thing that always bothers me about, you know, being in a smaller town is, is, you know, I, I really, I can't stand it when not everyone that wants to participate in something has the opportunity to participate in it. And like people are scrambling to apply for things online and, and fill the, you know, the, the, the registration forms before everyone else does. And it's just, it's annoying. It's, it's, you know, and, and I feel like especially this where it's education. I want to make sure that everyone that, that isn't a public school gets access to this. So, and it sounds like you're totally, you know, prioritizing that, and that's great. But I do want to impress upon, you know, the leadership, how important that is to me personally, if, if we're able to do it. So with that said, there was a, a question from the, from our, one of our community members. Elizabeth Frazier of Twenty Seven Windy Hill Road asks, special education students on IEPs who qualify for ESY services are not allowed to apply. Why?
So, do you want to answer it, Mr. Swank, or you? Do you want to add? Do you want to respond or you want me to?
Why don't I start and then you can jump in with anything other than that? So I'm really glad that this question was asked because I think that there's a lot of confusion around this. ESY, the Extended School Year Program for Students on IEPs are, is specifically recommended for students who demonstrate regression and a significant amount of recruitment time to regain back those skills. And not all students on IEPs qualify for ESY services, but some do. Those who do receive those services in the summer, and it is running from July sixth through August sixth this year. And it is specialized instruction per their IEP. It is attached to their goals and objectives, is delivered by special educators. And that is the kind of instruction that it is. Now, the summer learning program that we are talking about with Dr. Scollins is a general education program and is open to everyone. You are not precluded from applying for it if you have a student on an IEP or if you have a student on an IEP who qualified for ESY. But what you have to understand is that the summer learning program is not specialized instruction. It is general, you know, instruction in remediating some of those learning gaps and also, you know, providing some of that support across the summer. Certainly, you know, as a special educator, I would encourage people whose students have qualified for ESY to take advantage of that because that is a special education opportunity and program that was specifically designed for your individual child. If you choose to not participate in that and apply for, and if you, you know, there are enough slots and everybody gets, you know, to go to the summer learning opportunity, you, you just have to know that you, you don't get both of them because they're running concurrently. And, and that that, you know, would be a very different program. So no one is excluded or precluded from applying for it. You just have to understand what it is that kind of you're getting in each category and what you're participating in.
That's the answer. Thank you, Mrs. Swank.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Sowanka. I do, I see a follow up question from Ms. Frazier. She states, Mrs. Bradford specifically sent an email stating ESY students cannot apply because the two programs conflict. ESY is two hours a week.
It is correct that the programs are in conflict because they are running concurrently. And we do ask people, whatever program you're going to participate in, that you participate in a hundred percent. So for example, if you are participating in your ESY, Mrs. Bradford is probably presuming that you are participating in your ESY, not trying to leave you out of something. You would not be able to participate in ESY for two hours and then transfer over for the other hours of the other program. They, they are kind of in conflict, if you will, with each other like that. So if, if you have qualified for ESY, it is kind of a one or the other.
Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Sowanka. Just going to give it a second, see if there's a follow up question. There is, meaning as an ESY student, you cannot apply. Sorry, she's just, there was a typo and I'm trying to figure out.
I think it might.
Saying, meaning as an ESY student, you cannot apply.
If.
If you are the most in need.
Again, it's not that you can't apply, you would just have to choose which one you wanted to do. Yeah, so if you wanted to be in the summer learning program, that would be fine.
Yeah.
It's just that there wouldn't be the, the services through a special education teacher in that.
And the ESY is specifically and specially designed for the individual educational programs of the student.
Correct.
And Elizabeth Frazier saying, one is two hours and one is all week. So she thinks she's trying to differentiate between the two.
That's correct because there are different, well, I'll let Mr. Sowanka talk a little bit about the ESY, sorry.
So when ESY is recommended for individual students, it is based on individual student needs and it is able to be flexible and students get the amount of time that they need. So it, it may not in fact be a whole program or a whole week. It is whatever it is determined that the student needs. The summer learning program does run differently than that. We recognize that and we give you the ability to choose.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to give it another moment. The follow up question is, many special education students have not been determined for ESY yet. How do they know what their special ed student will receive?
So most of the ESY has already been determined and most of the IEPs have already been set and that is part and parcel of them. There probably are some that have not yet been determined, but that's kind of rare at this point in time. I would say reach out to your liaison and have a conversation with them about, you know, the ESY and if there is going to be a recommendation or if there has been a recommendation, if you have any doubt about that, and just make them aware that there are some time constraints around, you know, applying for this summer learning opportunity so that they know why you're asking.
Yeah, and, and Mrs. Swank, all these individualized questions can be certainly followed up with, with you and with the liaison. So just remember, sometimes it's easier to do that because of the specific, these are all great questions, but.
They're really good questions.
It might be a specific situation.
And Mrs. Frazier can absolutely apply. So even if she's not clear on what the ESY is, she could still apply and we'll just have a conversation about it. So, you know, so it doesn't mean that you cannot apply.
Okay, just give me one moment, please.
So Barbara, just to follow up, I could, Craig, on one thing, just to make, make the point clear, not all students with individual education program, specialized educational programs qualify for ESY, correct?
That's correct.
Right, so there, there are students who would benefit from the, the summer, summer program that Dr. Scollins is talking about, who do have individual educational needs. So, so really, it, it could be targeted to them, but those who actually qualify for the ESY program, that's, you're, you're suggesting that is a more appropriate, appropriate might not be the right word, maybe more. More specialized program for, for those students, and that's really the distinction.
Yes. This summer program is meant to catch other students who don't have the need for any, the extended school year that hasn't been determined that they need it. It's really for, it's kind of that next level.
So I think some of the confusion might be that we talked, we spoke about, you know, making sure we targeted and really emphasized the students who have IEPs or five oh fours or who just may happen to be struggling are part of this program if they, if their families and they in turn want to be. And that is very much the case. It's just that that ESY program is, is, is for a different purpose because of the specialized nature of it and for those students who qualify for it.
Right.
Okay.
I, I think Mrs. Frazier's final point, and then I'm going to ask anyone with, you know, this is obviously a concerning issue, right? This is, this is, this is important. And this is why we have Mrs. Sowanka give regular updates. She's regular, you know, regular guest in the school committee meetings, regular part of the, she's a leadership team member, obviously. It's an important aspect of any district. So it really is, and especially when someone is at a disadvantage from a learning perspective, especially in the year that we just went through. Really frustrating from their caregiver's perspective as well, seeing your loved ones struggle academically, especially if you're concerned that they are being excluded from an opportunity that may be provided to other students who may not even struggle as much. However, and, and so for that reason, it's important, it needs to be addressed. But I think in this public forum, like Dr. Sullivan, I think, just raised, I think it's, it's, it's best to address the general issues and then direct any personal issues to the leadership team. Mrs. Sowanka is extremely accessible, very responsive, as is Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins, as is any member of the school committee, if you, you wish to bring any of us into the mix. But, you know, I think that, you know, continue to, remember, this isn't your only opportunity, in other words, to speak to district leadership, especially with an IEP, you know, with more personalized approaches to, you know, your loved ones' education. So I just, I just do want to read her last comment and then we'll maybe move on to the next point, Dr. Sullivan. Ms. Frazier states that they should be able to do both. They should not be excluded because they have special education needs. Maybe the scheduling should be addressed because ESY ends August fifth. So, you know, it's something, please, Ms. Frazier, please, as I, I sent you a personal message, please direct your concerns to district leadership to have a more robust discussion about this in a private forum. And you're welcome to include any school committee members if you feel that that's necessary. But, you know, in this public forum, I think it's best to move on at this point, okay? So.
Craig, can I just get a point in?
Sure can, Ms. Kearney. You are a school committee member.
And also the liaison for the CPAC. And I just got to say, there is a meeting May 11th. And, and like you just pointed out, if it's, if it's a personal issue, address it to, to the school. If it's, if it's something that is a general, how we can help as school committee members, you know, that's a forum that you can use to, I'll be there and I'm listening and, you know, we're listening. And thank you, thank you for taking all the questions because I think it's a big part of getting things done. And I, I also too want to say that this is very, this is a very exciting program. And, and the more we can try to get more kids involved, it's a good thing. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Kearney.
If I could just say, Chairman McClellan, these are, these are great questions. It's a good conversation. And one thing we've learned through this year is that, you know, the, these questions often help us and they help inform us on what we might be able to do sometimes. You know, there are reasons we can and we're able to communicate that better in a private conversation and we figure things out. But sometimes we can make adjustments. So it is nice, and I want to thank Mrs. Frazier for, for bringing these conversations up. It's exactly why we're here. So thank you.
Okay. Dr. Scollins, are you, are you finished with the summer learning?
I am, unless there's other questions.
Okay, Ms. Clear, do you have any questions? Any more questions? Mr. Kearney? Mrs. Mar? Mrs. St. Orange? I don't either. Okay, moving on.
Wonderful. So if it's okay, I will move on to our special education update by Director of Student Services, Barbara Sowanka. She was going to update more on the ESY program today. And I think you probably, maybe you have some more information, but whatever else you'd like to update on Barbara.
Absolutely, yes. So, you know, as, certainly, there are three things actually I'd like to talk about. One is our Extended School Year Program, which I will kind of encapsulate again in a message. I also would like to talk a little bit about some of our secondary programs. And I also would like to talk a little bit about CPAC. So those are, those are three things that I have for you. And certainly one is the Extended School Year. And I just wanted to, again, I feel like I may be repeating myself a little, but Extended School Year is running this year from July sixth through August fifth. It is a special education program for students who are on IEPs who qualify for this particular service. And it is to prevent regression and undue recruitment time of skills as they are lost across the summer. And we take very specific data to determine the qualifying factors for ESY across school breaks, long weekends, vacations, and measure the recruitment time needed as well as the regression of skills and make individual determinations for students around whether they need extended school year services. And if they do, what those services need to look like, which also are very individualized in terms of amount of time, areas of need, things like that, and offer those services at IEP meetings. Certainly as it is May, you know, we've, we've come through all of our school breaks. Most of our extended school year services have been determined. There are some families who may have had meetings earlier in the year who may still need an outreach around ESY. But that will be happening shortly if that is still hanging out there. And I just wanted to kind of make it clear what that is, when it is, how it is different from the summer learning that we are doing and explain that to, to people so that there is a daddy confusion around it. So another thing that I wanted to talk about tonight is I want to talk a little bit about our secondary programming. As you know, we are expanding some of our co-teaching at the middle school level and looking very much forward to bringing on another teacher for that opportunity. This week, we had Seaside Consulting back with us, not in person, but in Zoom to provide professional development opportunities for our teachers who are co-teachers, both the general teacher and the special education teacher, the teachers who are new to it this year, as well as the teachers who have done it. And they each got some individual paired time, if you will, with our consultant after some, you know, conversations between the team chair and the consultant and myself. We'll have some follow up to that and continue to provide this ongoing training in co-teaching through Seaside Consulting. But we were very excited within this pandemic year that we were able to bring that back on board for our teachers. And those were for our teachers both who participated at the middle school and the high school this time around. So that was very nice. Also at the middle school and the high school, the high school really, there is a program at our high school that is called the Ames Program. It is the Academic and Individual Multi-Support Learning Center Program. And it is a program for students who meet certain criteria and have certain, perhaps higher level of need. And it is a wonderful classroom that's taught, as all of our classrooms are, by our wonderful teachers. But it is a program in, at which we have been looking to expand some of the opportunities for those students for, my understanding is, a couple of years now. And obviously this year and the end of last year, with it being a pandemic year, that certainly slowed us down. It kind of is a big undertaking. But the teacher of the program, myself, the team chair and Brian Scott, the principal, sat down about a week and a half ago. And we are happy to report that we are going to be able to, looking at the schedule and everything, develop what we have been wanting to develop for quite a while, which is a bit more of a vocational opportunity in that program for those students. Those students, you know, have a tendency to have some needs around some direct teaching of skills in order to be engaging. in order to be engaging in the community and jobs in travel and things like this. We are going to be starting next year probably on our own campuses and using our schools and opportunities in those schools to perhaps go down to the elementary level and do some reading and things like that. Expand slowly as we're just coming out of a COVID year, really teach a lot of those direct skills to those students. And while that's going on, form some partnerships in the community. Even utilize our, our school band and be able to expand that hopefully second semester with some community outings, perhaps some community opportunities for some volunteering, for some work, things like that, and really expand the opportunities for those students who are in that particular program. Looking at the trajectory of the students in that program, we are looking at, you know, students who really will benefit from those opportunities in the next few years. When we see the students who are coming up into the program and also students who may need to be with us, you know, post what would be a traditional graduation date. And that certainly would be to their benefit to gain some of those skills. I know that some of the parents who currently are parents of students in that program are very excited that this is going to be starting. So we're really thrilled to be able to be growing that program and taking on this trajectory. And we're really looking to continue building it and, and we're all very excited about that. My last item that I wanted to talk about tonight is I did want to talk a little bit about C P A C. As Mr. Kearney indicated, we have a meeting coming up on May 11th, and then we have another one, I believe, on June 6th, and those will be the final C P A C meetings for this year. In the middle of that, however, I did promise that I would make a, an announcement at tonight's meeting that on May 18th at 10 a.m., C P A C is having an outdoor coffee hour. I think it's the first in-person coffee hour that they've been able to have this year. It is at 234 Forest Avenue, which is actually the residence of the current C P A C president. But that has gone out in the navigator. It has gone out through our Aspen Sharing with Parents. And that is certainly, I think it's also gone out through some of the P T Os. So people have full awareness of that. But that is something that I promised that I would bring up tonight. And when we meet, or when I come to the next school committee meeting in June, too, what I have on my agenda really is to present an overview of this year in C P A C and some of our things that we've accomplished, some of the conversations and discussions we've had, some of the speakers we've had, and kind of what we're looking ahead for, for next year. Any questions or comments for me?
Let's see, Mrs. Cleary?
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Serwanka.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes, thank you. I just think this, this is great. We're, we're, it was a great presentation. I'm looking forward to the C P A C things. I think this year we had probably the most ever C P A C meetings. And, and that's great. I'm looking forward to both these coming up. Also too, is I just have a quick question too about looping of teaching in the, in the, can you explain how that, that works to, to, to the group?
The idea of looping teaching?
Yes, it would, it's in the, it's in the, mostly in the elementary level, correct? Like a first, second grade? And it's in what, what is it? And, you know, what, how does it work basically?
So when, when students loop, what happens is they stay with a particular teacher as they go up to the next grade level. It is, you know, a topic that came up in C P A C earlier this year when we were talking about students of high needs, students in, you know, pandemic learning, those kinds of things. It's something that I've discussed with the elementary principals. It's something that I'm going to revisit with C P A C again on May 11th. You know, many respects, it often can be, you know, very, very good for students. There are also, you know, some ways that sometimes, you know, like anything else, it may have some drawbacks. But, but that's pretty much what, what looping means.
Right. Okay. I just, I just got that question up and I just wanted to get it out to the community so that we're all kind of educated on it. And it's interesting. Thing, way to teach. It's kind of a community effort to help a student along. And, you know, I, I think it's worth at least talking about and and see if it works and how we can implement it because, you know, we're all trying to pull kids up, right? I mean, that's, that's the goal. That's why we're all here is, is to, in the inclusive, to make kids inclusive, right? Like how, how do we get kids to be more participating? And in sports and especially special needs kids, how can we get them to participate in other things other than school projects or, or learning about a subject? Maybe it's, maybe it is being part of a team. And how do we, how do we include them in being part of the team? And I think that's, that's what I think it is. It's, it's a whole team approach and you're a great part of that team, Barbara, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I mean, all the staff, all the teachers as well. Sometimes I forget to mention everybody, but I do want to say that.
And I do have to say that this year, you know, within our department, we have given support to students who needed it, who wanted to participate in after-school activities, clubs, sports events, things like that. And, and it's a wonderful thing to be able to provide for them because it's not all about just the academics. Schools, a much bigger experience than that.
Looping is, it's an interesting concept to, you know, to consider a student who may require assistance sticking with the same person who knows their learning styles. It is, it is an interesting thought. And, you know, I just don't want folks out there confusing looping with co-teaching with it, which is completely different. And something we've been really advocating for, which essentially pairs two teachers in a classroom, so that you're really blending in all the learning. And there's, there's various ways of going about that. But thanks for that thought, Paul, for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Mar?
No, thank you, Sirwanka. Great presentation. I loved hearing about the secondary program. And I agree like how important it is to get some vocational training for, for kids, special education kids, as well as gen ed kids. You know, in terms of, you know, how to live their life beyond the high school level a little bit. So I'm thrilled to hear that there's going to be some programming around that for next year. And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mrs. Saint Ange?
Yes, I'd just like to piggyback on everyone else's compliments. It's just really great to hear, I feel like especially in a year where we've been doing so much kind of problem solving to hear about programs that are building and growing and going forward. I think with the AIM program and also with co-teaching, I just am so looking forward to hearing updates as we go along and as that expands and just, it's just such a, like our whole community will benefit from, from having those programs well-supported and well-run. So thank you for helping with that.
Thank you, Mrs. Saint Ange. And thank you, Dr. Sirwanka. I had a question. I guess from Mr. Serwanka and Dr. Scollins. I don't know how well-informed my question is. It's, it's, because I know just the issue of special education I E Ps, I mean, they're individualized, so it, it varies widely from individual to individual student. But I'm just especially, you know, I'm personally, you know, very sensitive to this after the year that we just had. I'm wondering if there's any way, I, I don't know if there's any way to sort of track gaps within, you know, the portion of student body that are in I E Ps or utilize student services in any way. You know, specifically at the end of this year, after we're out of it, after school's over, I don't know if there is because everyone's so different, but if there's a way to sort of generalize the results in, in certain categories in some way so that we can see how our students that are most in need are doing after this really difficult year that frankly, I mean, some of these individual students have, you know, really struggle when we're in a regular year in person, you have a hand, you know, hands-on, one-on-one, in-person instruction. And that was unceremoniously swiped from them for the majority of this year. And I'm really concerned with how they're doing. So it's a really long-winded way of asking, is there any way to track this, their progress and/or their lack thereof, and see where we need to pay a little bit more attention for the coming year after we're through this year?
So I'm not sure that we can track them in, in kind of clusters or groups. But I can tell you that as individuals, we pretty much have been tracking them all year long and continue to do so. If you remember, you know, our highest need students, we brought in as often as we possibly could from the very beginning. And then we continued to expand that to our students. We had students who perhaps, you know, could not or would not come in for as many days as, as we could, you know, possibly offer them. But then we would have students coming in for like walk-in services and things like that. So as much hands-on things and growth that we could do throughout the year, as we saw students struggling and missing things, we were just really creative around opportunities about how to provide them with those things. We also had to look very closely at, not just, you know, that regression and recruitment idea of extended school year services, but also at the idea of COVID compensatory time and were, were they affected and were their skills so far back that we needed to look at extra time for them? And for some students who qualified for that time, they are getting extra time during E S Y and times like that. And then the individual goals and objectives that students work on are always annually updated. And if students are not making progress, they get their progress reports in line with when report cards come out. And if they're not making progress and we are looking at having to stay working on certain goals and objectives, or reconvene the team to look at it and say, progress is not being made. Here's what we need to do. Here's where we need to go. Those really are very individualized tailored to those students. So we can really track the progress or the lack thereof through those and in a very individualized way, see how kids are doing. Which, you know, we all worry so much about them, but it gives me some, some relief to know that we really have methods to know very specifically how these students are doing and in what areas might they be following even further behind that than, you know, we hoped and that we worry about. But to kind of group them as a cohort and comment out on it, I'm, I'm not sure how much validity that would have. But individually, we certainly can, Craig. And, and I think that that's really kind of where it's really important.
So I know Chairman McClellan, just to remind you, in next meeting, I know that Dr. Scollins is going to present a little bit more on the unfinished learning that we're seeing across the district. Maybe not, you know, tremendously specifically, but just to look at where we are in terms of our, what we're seeing for data. Might help a little bit because typically what we're seeing there isn't very different from what we're seeing with some of our students on individual educational plans to programs.
Thank you for that, Dr. Sullivan. It's tough because, you know, obviously this isn't, you know, this is a public meeting. Not all of these issues are something that are, you know, public domain to speak about. But it is important to me that the school committee understands where we're at from a special education perspective after the pandemic year. And I don't know how we can do that. And maybe, maybe the best way is to, I guess, invite interested members to just meet with you personally and go over things and what you've been seeing, trends, things like that. I don't know. I'm just, basically if you're able to say, well, you know, it's tough. It's tough to cluster. I just, I'm really concerned with the, I just want to make, I guess, I guess, I guess we just got to trust that you're, that you're doing your job, which we all do. But I, I feel like it's, it's sort of incumbent upon the school committee to ensure that, that, you know, our special education students are getting the attention that they need. And I just, I'm trying to ask you, and Dr. Scollins, Dr. Sullivan, like what the best way, the best mechanism through which we can, we can ensure that that is happening? Not that we don't trust that you're doing an excellent job. We all know you're doing a great job. But, you know, we're the ones that are elected to sort of, you know, be involved in this manner. So I'm just trying to think, and I guess maybe we, we can have this conversation offline, I guess. But, but, but it's something that is on my mind and I'm, I'm very sensitive to it. Go ahead. Yeah.
Just to help a little bit, Chairman McClellan, so at the elementary level, we have a battery of assessments that we give in reading three times a year. We have, we're using Lexia this year and Dreambox. Lexi is a reading, online reading platform that'll, that's adaptive and allows us to kind of allow students to work at their own pace, but also gives us some data to look at to see how students are doing. Dreambox is the same and that's for mathematics. So we're looking at the data that we have to see what are the trends and patterns. Teachers are also working together. And this is not just special education or general education. It's together looking at what are the standards that we have met with our students? What's the mastery level that they have and where are they going with that? So, so I do think that we do have some ways to look at those trends and patterns. It's going to be over time though, I think. Mrs. Saint Ange made a really good point that, that, that we're going to see things over the next couple of years. This was, you know, a, a year and a half of academics that we haven't done before. So, so we'll be looking, this is not just a one-shot deal at the end of this year. Okay, this is how it, how it is. Or in the fall, this is how it is. It's going to be fluid and it's going to take us a couple of years to really make sure that all our students are where we want them to be. And that's not just here in Cohasset, it's across the, well, it's across the world, right? So, so I think that we will be looking at that and we'll be using all the data we can in order to, to look for those trends and patterns and, and make sure that we're putting supports in for students that need it so that we can accelerate our learning. That we can make sure that our students don't feel that they're not adequate and that they're not doing their job because they are, they've done an amazing job. And, and they're learning. They learned last spring and they learned through hybrid. It may not be all the things that you would typically learn in school, but they've all learned. We've all learned something during the pandemic and so about ourselves and about the world. So there's a lot of learning that's happening. But I do appreciate the desire to know what are our trends and patterns and what does that look like? So I'll have some, some information for you next week. All our information won't be complete because they're still in the process at the elementary level, really looking at that data. And we'll be looking at it over the summer too, to see what does that, you know, what does it look like and what do we need to do?
And one other thing, if I could piggyback on that a little bit, and, and that might be a really interesting way to do it, Chairman McClellan, is that if we use those data points and all students participate in those kinds of things that Dr. Scollins was just talking about, then we can pull that cohort of students who are on I E Ps out of that, take a look at them through the lens of those data points and see if there is more aggression than we would expect compared to their general peers or to compare to how they've done in the past. And that would give us some of that information.
That's exactly what we do with MCAS information as well.
Yep. Yep.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm talking about. So that's.
Yeah, we definitely could do that.
Yeah, we will continue and using data to drive our instruction and we're going to improve our teaching and learning because that's, you know, evidence is what helps us drive what we need to do next.
Thank you. Well, there's one before we move on from Mrs. Serwanka's update. There's a question from community member Elizabeth Fraser's asking, how many special education students qualified for COVID compensatory time?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have those numbers in front of me. I can't really state at this moment in time.
Okay. Well, I think from, from the offline conversation, I think Ms. Fraser will be reaching out to you anyway. So maybe you can address that when you guys have your, you know, your conversation. Okay. So, Mr. Serwanka, does that conclude your report?
It does. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item or section is the school committee section. And first on the agenda in this section is the presentation from the Alternative Energy Commission or Committee and led by Tanya Bodell. There are a few different, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at some messages that were sent to me in terms of who we need to promote to panel.
I'm going to let Mrs. Serwanka go just because I don't think the rest of the agenda ties into her so much. So thank you, Barbara. Sue, of course, it, it does to you, so.
Craig, do you want me to give a little bit of an intro or Chairman McClellan?
Yeah, yes, sure. Let's just get everyone. Yeah, I guess you could do that while we're promoting everyone.
While you're promoting, so as those on the committee remember, and those in the audience who attend regularly remember, earlier this school year, there had been a study done by the Alternative Energy Committee about different solar options that might be able to be put in place on the school properties in Cohasset. And there was a vote. And there was a vote to basically continue that exploration and to allow companies come up with with proposals and to share ideas and designs with us. And so now that we have our kids back in school and perhaps have a tiny bit of space to think about issues like alternative energy, Tanya Bodell is here and also a fellow representative from Amaresco to speak about about those designs and what has progressed since our our vote this winter.
Great. I'll start while Amaresco is getting promoted. We have three guests from Amaresco. If you recall, they were the bidder who gave us what we felt was the best option for the parking canopies. When we presented originally, there was inquiries about the design, whether there were other options. We've asked them to go back and look at what else could be done, be creative in the other locations. Maybe give us some visuals about what those parking canopies would look like. We had previously given you estimated savings for the schools and and what that would entail if we went with the parking canopies. In the meantime, just, and I think Craig will clarify this as well. We have been tasked with continuing to look at other options for the school. So the exploration was not just to look at other options for the canopies, which is what we're gonna hear about today, but to explore whether or not there are other options with respect to other locations which we're looking at or the school roofs, which would be very favorable. It's just that they're ready to be replaced and we don't know the timing of that replacement. So tonight you're going to hear about parking canopies and Amaresco is gonna give you some visuals to help you think about what it looks like. There's no vote. This is informational, but the goal is to keep pushing the ball forward so that we can take it to a vote once we know what all of the options are.
Anya, can I ask, is everyone who who you want as a panelist on the screen at this time? Like, I mean, are they, I promoted who I thought I should be promoting. I just wanna make sure I didn't leave.
Jackson, I see Paul and I see George. And I think Jackson, that's, those are the only ones we have from you, right?
Absolutely. Yes, we're we're good to go if you're ready for us.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Perfect. So I will let Jackson introduce himself in the Amaresco team. We've been thrilled to work with them. They've been wonderful and please take it away.
So I may have spoken too soon, Chairman McClellan. If it's possible for you to give me authority to share my screen, I was hoping to cut up a PowerPoint if that'll be allowed.
But the, I'm not actually the gatekeeper there.
Oh, okay, okay.
You're gonna have to swing.
I'll say, you're all set.
All right, I think we've got it now. All right, does that look okay to everyone? Everyone can hear me all right?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, so I understand we still have a lot of items to discuss tonight, so I'll try to be time efficient as possible. I did wanna say a quick note, just to say congratulations to the school committee, the teachers and all the onsite personnel on the the great work of getting students back into the classroom. Hearing the students speak earlier tonight was was wonderful. So I know there were many long days and longer nights that you all put into that. So congratulations.
Thank you. Very kind of you.
So without further ado, again, my name is Jackson Doughty from Amaresco. I'm joined tonight by my colleagues, Paul Makers and George Petruilis. We will be giving an update on the solar canopy options to achieve the Cohasset School System electricity savings. A quick agenda recap, we will provide some overview of our previous meeting for those, you know, it was a few months ago. So do a quick recap of that, discuss our our long-term request as we continue meeting with the school committee. We'll talk about some of the alternative designs that we looked at as a means to capture these alternative energy, renewable energy projects for for the town. And we'll finally end up discussing the updates to the savings financially and for your carbon footprint reductions as well as visual updates. We've prepared some visual renderings to help the town visualize what what these projects would look like on your campuses. So from the previous meeting, you know, we presented with the Alternative Energy Committee to discuss solar opportunities at the Osgood, Deer Hill and High School. These projects will have a twenty-plus project life, generate renewable energy and electric bill savings for the town. We would also be providing education materials in the form of kiosks and long-term historical data of the solar production accessible for your students to analyze. We have actually a decent amount of school curriculum materials that could be shared with your teachers as well if that was of interest for incorporating the the onsite energy into a lesson plan. From our last meeting, the school committee gave the A E C permission to proceed with discussions of the solar canopies at the school and specifically was looking for more information on economic benefit, what the visuals of the carport systems would look like and the option value of of the installations. As mentioned, our long-term request, understanding, you know, we're we're looking forward to receiving more feedback and follow-up comments and questions from you tonight is to receive approval from you for Amaresco to proceed with executing a power purchase agreement and lease with the town. This would, of course, be subject to approvals from other town agencies, most notably Select Board, Planning Board, Conservation Commission and Building Commission. The construction will only commence once all necessary town approvals have been received. But of course, we wanna go to the school committee first as these are, in fact, going on to your schools. Some of the alternate designs that were asked to be taken a look at was the rooftop opportunities to install solar up there and instead of the canopies. Amaresco reevaluated this option. The, while we strongly encourage rooftop solar installations as they make for a great opportunity to, you know, maximize your efficiency of of an otherwise, you know, you know, unused space, the concern right now with the schools is that there's an upcoming rooftop replacement to be scheduled in the next few years. The the challenge with this is that in order for us to, if we were to install a rooftop solar system today, then it would have to be removed and replaced during the rooftop replacement period. There is known to be substantial construction costs and even material costs in terms of this installation due to the conduit, the, you know, metal conduits, the the wiring and and the panel degradation that can happen during this process. For this reason, you know, we would strongly encourage the town to consider this to be an installation to take place once their rooftops are replaced in the coming years. Additional options that were considered were a new bus parking lot as well as a ground mount array, considering both of these to be located, installed in the what I would call the the forest area south of the Osgood and Deer Hill Schools. With the new bus parking lot, the idea was that there would be a new dedicated parking lot for school buses with an opportunity to locate the solar panels above this parking area. The concern at this time is the timing requirement as well as the capital requirement for this to be performed. There would be quite a bit of tree clearing, new road pavement and new parking lot pavement to be performed before even considering adding the solar on top. Strictly speaking, from the solar project perspective, these projects are required to meet a certain timeline with the state and with National Grid in terms of interconnection approvals and operational dates. With that in mind, you know, the timelines are really in the range of one to two years. Our concern is that not, you know, at the extreme is that we wouldn't even be able to meet that and would lose the incentive altogether. Or at the very least, our concern is that it would it would delay capturing the incentive available by the state at this time, which is a declining block program. The other was the ground mount array, similarly located in the forest area where the, instead of pouring in the asphalt or locating a parking lot, we would simply remove the trees and install a ground mount solar array in that area. The design would require extensive tree clearing. And even then, as I'll show on my next slide, there is concern about wetland areas in that forest. You know, we would, of course, be required to stay outside those wetland areas, which are home to sixty-foot, seventy-foot tall trees causing, you know, potential shading for the array. I guess, you know, long-winded way of saying that it it would be a concern for the production and the ultimate savings associated with that project. The two layouts shown are on the left showing a like a ground mount scenario. We have overlaid this over mass G I S database of potential wetlands. So in the center here, as well as to the west, are wetland areas where we would be keeping a buffer space back to limit tree clearing. So we will be clearing trees where the blue plant panels are shown. Again, this is not the most efficient design due to the limits to the wetlands. It still would require significant tree clearing and would be having the panels you know, seemingly pretty close to abutting neighbors' properties, which we are very cognizant of and and want to try to limit as much as possible. On the right, these panels indicate from a bird's eye view where a solar carport may be able to be installed over a bus parking lot if the bus parking lot were to be constructed in this area. Again, to reiterate where, you know, our our concerns are around the timeline primarily for that array. With this in mind, you know, we would, will welcome any feedback, comments or questions on these and and improvement opportunities. With these considerations in mind, our recommendation is still to move forward with carport structures over the existing school parking lots. This slide here is a representation updating on at least the economic savings that would be associated with the projects. On subsequent slides, I will provide updated visuals, but I wanted to focus in here on this opportunity. Some notes on design will be that the height clearance allows for unrestricted access for the school buses, emergency vehicles and visibility of pedestrians, buses and and other movement on the campuses. The greenhouse gas reduction equivalent is equivalent to removing one hundred seventy-one cars from the road each year, which is a number I like to share. It's important to our company and and we find it's valuable for the campuses to to help visualize the carbon impact of these projects. And of course, as as much shown, as summarized in the table, there is a long-term twenty-year energy bill savings to the town. I do wanna take a pause here to to, you know, reiterate and remind everyone listening in that for these projects, Amaresco is providing one hundred percent of the personnel and capital required to install the project. So there's no upfront cost from the town. And in exchange for the installation, we are selling the power at at this at a savings rate so that there is long-term, you know, guaranteed locked-in savings for the projects to the town. As another savings opportunity, if the town is considering E V chargers as a future upgrade, we will already be performing through these, you know, this construction work, trenching and conduit install into the parking lots. Through doing this work and partnering with National Grid, there can be significant economies of scale to either fully install E V charging stations or at the very least provide the town with conduits to be E V ready essentially so that the conduits are in place so that in the future coming years, if you want to expand your E V charging portfolio, they can be dropped in place and it significantly would decrease the installation costs. So I wanted to provide a few slides with a representation of the amount of renewable energy that's being generated by these. So on a site-by-site basis, we can go through the currently expected electric load of the schools based off of historical electric bills versus the engineering projections of what the solar canopy will actually generate. So at the Deer Hill School, this solar canopy proposed right now would provide the school with ninety-eight percent. I'm gonna round up, call that a hundred percent of the school's annual electric load each year. At Osgood, it would actually exceed the school's load. Again, for for clarification, this is on a month-by-month basis where the the green bars are the solar generation. As you can see, the solar is, of course, exporting or producing more energy during the summer months. But in aggregate, this is exceeding the school's load. And for the middle high school building, the solar is providing approximately thirty-three percent of the school's annual load. So any excess generation can be passed on through a credit system to the other schools so that no savings or energy is wasted by the town. Essentially, you know, effectively, this will allow that this project to power sixty percent of the school's electric needs on an annual basis. In this section, I'd like to provide some visual renderings to help the committee visualize what these carports would look like on the campus. We have made some minor revisions to the structures to try to minimize footprint, try to minimize you know, overall square footage of the systems to have them be as minimally intrusive as possible. So beginning with Deer Hill, this is a visual representation of the entranceway driving up to the school. The systems, the piers are spaced approximately four row spaces apart from each other and the piers are located at the intersection points of the parking spaces. This is significant in that it prohibits any loss of parking spaces. There will be no lost area for cars to park and, you know, provide drop-off services for teachers as well. As mentioned, we do incorporate a minimum height clearance of thirteen and a half feet. We have found with the many other towns that we've done, including Natick, Newton, currently town of Lexington and several others that thirteen and a half feet has been found to be acceptable for a fire department, you know, D P W, snowplows, et cetera, to have unrestricted access for their, for the, all their vehicles. Yeah, now we're looking at the Osgood school loop. And here would be the high school lower lot. Some other options that can be incorporated on request could be to add to the scope custom colors for the steel piers and or the concrete blocks at the bases. You know, if there are certain school colors, team mascots, all that could be incorporated if it was, you know, something that was deemed a visual benefit to, you know, make them more visually aesthetically appealing. So at that point, again, I just would like to reiterate, our our long-term request and and hope is to you know, receive your approval to move forward to the Select Board for negotiating a power purchase agreement so that we can work towards further designs, further engineering studies, working with National Grid and the state to you know, move forward with these projects. I do have a few, I do have a few case study slides, but I think, you know, if if that was requested, we can look at a few other towns. We've done these, but I'll I'll pause now and and welcome any questions or comments from the committee.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation and those renderings. Any questions, Mrs. Cleary?
How much would we have to, how large a space would we cut trees down in if we were to do that?
The, oh, sure, let me um go back here.
And thank you for the presentation. Sorry, I just.
No, no, thank you. I appreciate the question. I don't have a exact acreage number on my, on the top of my head. I can, I can certainly follow up and get that for you. This, sorry, going way back here. Approximately for this this ground mount system here. This is approximately a one megawatt system typically for this, it equates to about four or five acres. So I I can get the exact number, but that is, that's the approximate estimate right now.
And I apologize, did another slide with a sort of a grid tell us how that would compare to the other options that you've laid out?
I I don't have, do you mean financially or in terms of system size, or I guess both?
Yeah, production.
I I don't have that comparison. Approximately the, if if this full ground mount system here were to be constructed. You would have the same quote unquote system size as all three projects here. The concern would be that the energy generated would be significantly less because of the significant shading and impact of the wetlands. So instead of close to one point one million kilowatt hours. Our estimate at this time is you'd be much closer to only eight hundred or nine hundred thousand kilowatt hours.
And Tanya, do you have a sense of how others in town might feel about that process? You know what I mean?
Yeah, you know, there's no free lunch. We are looking at ground mount. In other locations, but they all would have trees taken down. The state gives less credit, which is why even the ground mounts cheaper to install, you don't get as much. The savings are approximately the same as the carports generally. I think like nobody likes to cut down trees, especially on a place called Deer Hill. Just, that's why we asked them to also look at whether or not a bus parking facility would work. And that was the rectangle that you saw. It's smaller, smaller footprint. It would serve two purposes. It could solve a traffic problem associated with the delivery, but it's just time, right? The timing is everything and that's what's holding us back on the school roofs as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleary. Mr. Kearney, you have anything to add at this point?
Uh, yes, Jackson, thank you for the presentation. I think it's fantastic, a fantastic presentation. However, I do have a lot of concerns here. One of the things that you had said was you strongly encouraged it to go on the roof. I can't agree with you more. I don't know why we're not going to wait until we put the new roofs on to to revisit this. We're talking about, you know, adding, cutting down trees and we're trying to save the environment. We're talking about, you know, as little as twenty five thousand dollars a year to rent out such a big spot of real estate. It's not, you know, you give us money that's twenty years raised out. I don't really send my customers what they're going to make in twenty years. It's usually what what is it going to do for us in a year? And that's twenty five thousand per school. Is it worth it? Is it, you know, I I guess we have to ask that question when we're looking at. Is are these things there permanently? Are they going to rust? Who's going to take care of them? The snow plows, do they get around them? You know, is it going to be safer for kids when they're backing out of the school? So we have so many questions that I don't feel comfortable voting for this at all, other than to revisit it. And when we put the, when we, I strongly encourage that we put it on the roofs. And that we 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 take, we table this until we have that discussion. Because I think it it's an eyesore. I think I think it should go on a roof. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Mar.
Thank you for the presentation. I just have a question, Mrs. Bodell. You mentioned that you were looking at other areas for ground mount. Behind the middle high school is Lillard Field. And at the far edge of the field, there's an incline. And at some point that becomes town land and I don't know the the lot, the property line between the school and the town. But that's a southeast facing location. Did you look at that for a ground mount?
So thank you for that question. That was identified nine years ago as a potentially great place. I I don't know, Emmeresco, if you did look at that, we did include that on our tour that we gave when we put out the RFP. And specifically showed that as a potential area that ground mount solar could be placed on. It's small, but it it could work. I don't know, Jackson, if you have any comments on that or remember.
Could you, could you say, I'm sorry, the the which hill or which part of this you were mentioning?
This is, do you remember there was a practice field behind the high school, middle school?
Yes, and the slope, yep.
Below the water tower.
Right, right. So it's something that we can revisit. I do recall it during the tour. Our expectation at the time was that that space would only allow for under fifty KW of solar to be installed. Which just, you know, based off of the the program requirements would not necessarily be cost effective. It's something we can, we can take away from this meeting though and revisit.
Yeah, and just for perspective, the police and fire station roofs are about thirty five kilowatts. So it'd be slightly bigger than the police fire station roofs and smaller than the water plant roofs.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mar. You given other additional questions?
No, I would just, you know, if we had to vote on on the proposal for the ground mount behind the Ausgood school. I'm in a butter, so I'd have to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. I don't think that they're looking for any vote tonight, so, but. You may not have to worry about this at all, Mrs. Mar. Well, from a voting capacity anyway. Mrs. St. Orange.
Uh, thank you and thanks, Jackson, for the presentation and for exploring the other options. And and it's it's also really good to hear everyone's opinions on the solar. And I guess the perspective I want to bring to this is. Is this solution the perfect solution? I don't necessarily think so, but I think that this discussion is so important to continue. And as, you know, as we're exploring options for our roofs, I know Ms. Owen is is in the works of writing up paperwork right now, right? To to see if we can maybe get our roofs replaced sooner. I think that it's just really important for us to think big picture and to keep things on the table. Not that we're going to break ground right now and take this as our solution. But that we need to be forward thinking about how we can incorporate solar into our schools. I think about the conversation about the bus parking lot. I don't even know if that is where a bus parking lot is going to go. But we've been also hearing about the potential for electric buses. So how cool would it be in the future to have electric buses plugged in to our own electric charging stations at our schools? I just think that. Oh, I guess because I was part of the RFP process and I I have been so intimately involved with this. I have a perspective that this is not necessarily a yes or no. This is a go, no go for launch, but uh, let's continue the conversation so that we can find the best fit for Cohasset. And for our school system. And also for just making our our municipality a bit more sustainable. So I just want to bring that up so that we're not necessarily getting stuck on carports or rooftop solar. I'm I'm super anti cutting down trees to put in in solar behind the schools. But that is actually where I would probably draw the line, but. But I just want to make sure that we are looking at it as continuing the conversation and continuing to explore options as they evolve and progress. So that is my input for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. We're sort of running over the time. I had a lot of this. I'm going to cut myself off. We're not voting on anything anyway. Just thank Jackson for his presentation and for Ms. Bodell for her continuing efforts. Surrounding alternative energy. Thank you all so much. It's important information for us to have as we move forward. So thank you so much for your participation and your work.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the time. And thank you, Emmeresco, for all of your hard work.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate your time.
Take care. Okay, moving on is the next item under the school committee section is the school committee goals update. We return to our vice chairperson, Mrs. Ashley Cleary.
Okay, it is that time to discuss our goals. I'm gonna share my screen. If I haven't given permission, I will share my screen.
It's just not up on the top of the screen.
Well, we're recording now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good point. Thanks. Okay, so moving on from that brief up, it was supposed to be a brief update. I apologize. We're we're running behind here. Reports from all the subcommittees, we'll just go around. If you have reports, please share them. Mrs. Cleary.
I do have some quick information. The Cohasset Pride Project is official. It is online. You can go to CohassetPrideProject.com and you can reserve your pride flag for June this year in Cohasset. So exciting. We're taking donations. I'm sorry, I'm a, I'm affiliated with it, so I don't know. Anyway, it's part, part of my work with the diversity committee. And we are planning some fun things for June, so keep an eye out. We are also planning, by by we, I mean the diversity committee is involved, not the Pride Project. June twelfth, we're going to be doing an outdoor movie night with the movie Loving. And I'm in the process of working with Pam Fahey, so it's not like officially blessed yet, but June twelfth, keep an eye out. We're also going to be commissioning a mural, I think, for Juneteenth. And that we're going to share that with the schools so that they can proudly display that, leading up to that important holiday. And that's all I have. Policy will meet next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleary. Mr. Kearney, any updates?
Yes, CPAC, May eleventh, I'm looking forward to that. Also too is summer sport, spring sports are coming along. Glad to say that it's it's going well. And I'm looking forward to going to some some games, softball games and seeing my kids play. And I think that's great that we're starting to see that also too is that I'd like to see like more theater come come back. They're talking about Cohasset Theater is coming back, so I think that's that's definitely signs of hope. And like to, there was a comment that I, is Dr. Sullivan here? Dr. Sullivan?
Sure is.
I was wondering that if we could ever have some kind of a, like a participation report. And maybe you can assign maybe a liaison for that to like, let us know what, you know, what kids are participating in. Because I think there's a, there's, 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 is there too many kids doing it? Or what, what, what are we going to do just besides sports? And I'd like to know, like, you know, what have kids participating in? And I think that would be, you know, a great liaison position for somebody to encourage kids to, you know, maybe talk to the certain liaison person. Hey, my kid needs to participate in something, right? And do we have anybody that or is it, can we like socialize that idea? Oh, absolutely. We can get that. We and we do have our middle school enrichment program and we have our a cappella program just started and. Yeah, absolutely. It's something that we could update on and and get more information about. Students participating in the various activities, not just sports. Right, including sports at all levels. That's something I could probably have for you probably next meeting.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you so much.
I just want to voice my support for that idea. I think it would be so great for us to have like a, like a holistic view. Of what activities our kids are involved with, and I want to thank Mr. Kearney for bringing that up. I think it's a great idea.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's good to have always. I mean, this year obviously was a little, little more pinched than the past years. But there's been all kinds of things happen. I'll give you the middle school, for instance, Dungeons and Dragons Club. And, you know, there's a lot of virtual offerings happening that that were, you know, we're, we're maintaining. And perhaps we just haven't provided you enough of that. So let me, let me get some of that together and present it.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Kearney, for the updates. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, moving on, Mrs. Mar, any updates?
No updates.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar, Mrs. St. Orange.
No updates.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. The only update I have is that the the portraits of our our wonderful seniors are going to be going up on the commons. Towards the end of the week. Thanks to Kim Froyo, Kim Albanese and our beloved PSO president, Jen Dial. Thank you for all your efforts in making sure that our seniors are celebrated appropriately this year. With that, we move on to the next agenda item, which is the approval of minutes. And thank you to our secretary, Mrs. St. Orange. We have a set of minutes to approve. That is therefore the Wednesday, October seventh, two thousand twenty meeting. Everyone should have received a copy of these meetings, meeting minutes in their packet. If you did not have a chance to review them, please let us know or do not vote. But are there any comments? People can just sort of speak up if they have a correction to make.
Can I add a comment, Craig, that, or Chairman McCollum, sorry, I'm so first name tonight. There in the packet is the Wednesday, October seventh, meeting minutes. And then Mrs. Mar helped out by typing up and I merely edited minutes for a few meetings that we had as a group. We were a quorum and we were not meeting on a Wednesday night. So that's the the last three pages of the packet are separate meetings. From October twenty second, December seventh and December eighth, just so we're making sure we're clear on all the different dates that are included in that packet.
Okay. Thank you. It's to the October seventh, two thousand twenty meeting minutes, though. Does anyone have any corrections to add or revisions?
I have a couple of things. And page two, under Christopher Allen's questions. There's a beginning, there's a open parentheses, but no closed parentheses, and I just was wondering. And there's a question mark and then it goes on to an, I don't know. Cut and paste it directly. I have no idea, but it just doesn't make sense to me. So maybe, yeah, we can close the parentheses after the isolation.
And yeah, close parentheses then question mark because it is a question.
And then the other comment I had, and I don't know if this is, I don't think this is changing the content. I think it's just making it easier to understand under school committee comments and communication on the next page. Second sentence, I think if we just said he thanked Mrs. Mar for promoting the existence of this committee, period.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
To the community, not to the committee, to the community.
Yes.
Well, I, well, if we just said he thanked Mrs. Mar for promoting the existence of this committee, period, we could say that. Or we could just say, thank you for promoting the existence of the committee to the community. We could do that too.
I will, I will update that accordingly.
I'm also concerned that we're so far behind on minutes. And I know it's not your, I I'm not like pointing fingers at anyone at all. I just wonder like, are we going to get an avalanche of minutes? Are we just going to be months behind in perpetuity? Like, what is our, what is our forecast on this?
I don't think there is one, Mrs. Cleary, but the intention is to get an avalanche of minutes so that we can catch up. Because we we are not really allowed to be behind on minutes, you know, in perpetuity. So, you know, I I think, you know, Mrs. Mar has has expressed. Concern about that to me. And Mrs. St. Orange and I have, you know, spoke about, you know, this concern where, you know, it's not, it's not something that is. Being ignored, put it that way. So there, there is hopefully a time where we will get more, you know, of an avalanche of minutes, but. I don't, I don't really know what to say. I'm certainly willing to, you know, get some to review and and pitch in. So it's not just one person's job. If we do get a lot of the time, I've made that clear to Mrs. St. Orange. I mean, not one person should have to do that and I'm more than happy to do that. And I think we can all, we get a lot, we can all, in many hands, make make light work or whatever the saying is. So we can all pitch in, but right now, you know, what we, what we see is what we, we have. So.
Like, it would be helpful if I, and this is totally selfish and it's totally fine if we can't do this. It would just be helpful if I had some idea of when that avalanche was going to come because it's, you know, it's time consuming. Read a whole ton of content.
Well, let's, let's. Well, let's, let's, let's try and ascertain that offline, because I don't think we're gonna come to a conclusion here tonight, right now.
It would just be good to get an update in that respect, maybe next meeting.
Yep, I can absolutely follow up on that, and I will, I will let you know.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. Okay, Mr. Kearney, do you have any revisions about on the, on the 10 seven minutes?
No, it, it looks great, and.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Mar, do you have any revisions on 10 seven minutes?
Yeah, the, the beginning seems a little odd. I think Chairman McClellan called the meeting to order 5:16. He's, and I think the executive session comes after. He stated the meeting will be held remotely, roll call vote. And then it should be the committee moved into executive session at 5:16 PM. And then it should read the committee reconvened in public at 6:10 PM. You have to note when you go in and when you go out, or when you come back into public session.
Okay.
And then, under public comment, Alex Sullivan, Deer Hill School Principal, stated she's so proud of these students. I think that belongs in the superintendent's report on Indigenous People Day presentation and not part of public comment.
Okay.
That was all I had.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Cleary caught the other one.
You, Mrs. Mar, Mrs. St. Orange, I don't imagine you have anything how you generated the document?
No, I will make the corrections noted, however.
Mrs. Cleary took one of mine and Mrs. Mar addressed one of mine, so. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the minutes, including the corrections noted here tonight?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Mar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kearney. All in favor, Mrs. Cleary?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously carries, and those minutes are approved. Moving on to the, there was a workshop, Goals Workshop, Thursday, October 22nd, 2020, we have a summary of the Goals Workshop. Were there any revisions that anyone had for this? Speak now. Okay, is there a motion to approve this summary for the goal-setting workshop on October 22nd, 2020?
So moved.
Motion by, made by Mrs. Cleary, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mar. All in favor, Mrs. Cleary? Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously carries, and that summary is approved. Moving on to the Monday, December 7th, 2020, School Committee Meeting Minutes. Are there any revisions to this from any of the committee members? This was the strategic planning forum. Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the summary as written or as provided to in your packets?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Mar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kearney. All in favor, Mrs. Cleary?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously carries. That summary or meeting minutes, the set of meeting minutes is approved. Next and last is the Tuesday, December 8th, 2020 minutes for another goal-setting workshop. Are there any revisions from any members of the committee at this time? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor to approve those minutes as presented and as presented to you in your packets tonight?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mar. All in favor, Mrs. Cleary?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously carries, and those minutes are approved as written. Those were all the minutes I had in my packet. Mrs. St. Orange, is that your understanding of all the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, great. Moving on to the next agenda item is the topic's not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours. I don't have any. But the next agenda item is the executive session, which we do have a reason to meet in executive session, which is reason number three. Strategy regarding collective bargaining and review of non-union personnel contracts. Is there a motion to move into executive session for the reasons stated?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Mar. Motion seconded, Mr. Kearney?
Sure, second.
Seconded by Mr. Kearney. All in favor, Mrs. Cleary?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously carries. We will move into executive session this time. Everyone, I provided you with a link in an email not too long before the meeting. We can use that. Please, Dr. Scholes, Dr. Scholes and Dr. Sullivan, please leave this open and either use another device or something to join us with that link that I sent you. You, you, you also received it. Mrs. Owen, I don't think needs to be in executive session, so she may be off the hook here for tonight.
Aye, Sue, thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Sullivan, do you want me to stay here like I did at the last meeting, or I'm going to leave and come back, because it's gonna be okay?
You can, if you want to come to, come over to executive session. Yeah, did you have the link, Craig, sent?
I do.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna stay on this, and I'm gonna use my phone to go over to executive session.
I'll do this, I'll do the same.
Okay.
All right.
Hello. All right, let's, okay, Dr. Sullivan's here. Great, this worked. This worked this time. We figured it out. That's what we're gonna do from now on. That's, that's great. Excellent. We figured it out right in time to go back into in-person meetings. All right, well, we have a quorum. There's no reason to wait for Paul to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. St. Orange. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cleary. All in favor, Mrs. Cleary?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney is absent, texting me. Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan, that motion passes by a vote of four and one absent vote. Mr. Kearney was not present for the last two minutes of the meeting. The meeting is adjourned at 9:02 PM. Thank you, guys. That was a great meeting.
Thank you. Great, good meeting.
Thank you.
Have a great night, everyone.
Good night.